I guess we'll call this meeting as ordered here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Just note that number seven, nine, at nine ten is canceled out today, so we need to...
Move through with the agenda with the corrections.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we'll go to employee recognitions this morning. We'll get on some people. One of my favorite things to do here, to get to know more. And the first one on the list is Valerie Nessa, but I hear she's ill this morning. So Kevin will comment. Appreciate Valerie Nessa, it's been 15 years with public health, so give that to Valerie.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll give that to her.
You gonna say something?
Oh, well, that, oh, I can't. She's not here to benefit from that. Val is one of our support staff and has worked in a variety of areas in public health, and currently she's in our public health clinic in Wick, so she is very dependable, and we appreciate having her on. So, thank you.
Then we got Kristen Dupree. She also has 15 years into its social services. Holly, who's here to tell us a few things about...
I sure will.
She wanna take some notes on this year.
So Kristen started 15 years ago with social services as an ongoing child protection specialist. She initially went into our disability unit and is providing case management for kids with developmental disabilities from birth through 12 years old. So she's a great resource to our community and to our agency, sharing her knowledge and resources with all. So we're happy to have her part of the team.
Congratulations. This is your chance to be problem.
It's almost true.
Any citizens to be heard that are not on the agenda? I guess you can't see anybody out there. Next thing is the approval of the minutes from January 21st meeting.
Your approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payment of bills.
Your approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing we've got is Joe Olson that'll go ahead with the request. He asked for some boiler replacements.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joe. We, a couple of weeks ago, we met with Joe and he explained something about boilers leaking almost weekly, that he has to bring someone in here to do some, so he went and got a couple of bits for us, so tell us about your procedure.
Yep, so yeah, we have a pretty significant boiler project going on. These are the two boilers down in the courthouse basement here, so... And we had added this on five, six years ago to the building improvement plan, and we kinda knew they were coming to the end of their life, and you know, we typically experience one or two weeks of season and move on, but now we're seeing them weekly, and so we feel it's time to start looking into this project. So what I did is, several months ago, I looked, I met with a couple of different companies and just to see what we're looking at, and got kind of an estimated cost of, if somebody were to come in here, we put RFPs out, if somebody do like a turnkey project, I was getting the numbers of 375,000, somewhere in there, to do everything. And so at that point, I thought we should, I was thinking, take a different approach here, where we'd do more, where I would hire a, or we would hire an engineer directly, and then I would run the project myself, hopefully to reduce some overhead costs. So what I did is, the first step of doing this would be to hire an engineer. Reason I need the engineer, obviously, I gotta have some plans to submit to the state to pull with demo, I mean, a building permit to get going on, and so this would be the first step, is this. So I went out and I talked with one engineering and J K. One engineering came in at 18,600, and J K came in at 19,850. So I'm comfortable moving forward with one engineering with your permission on this project, so. As far as funding, this 18,600 come out of Fund 19, and that would be the first start of this. I plan on coming back to the board for RFP requests for proposals for the project itself, so. Yeah, with that, any questions?
Move the rule. Okay. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, second. As we discussed at our committee meeting, you know, it's just to find out how much more is needed, or what is all needed, you know, so...
Yep, so, yeah, and when I come back, I, in the project estimated timeline I have here, I have first step to come back from a RFP for boilers, because that's a pretty big cost of the project. So I'm gonna try to get the boilers and the mechanic, electrical, and demo all on that same date, so we can, you know, open up the bids and come back for a total project cost for you guys, too. So as far as Fund 19, is where all this would be paid out of, we have a balance of 440,000, so I feel we have, you know, the funds to do this, but yeah, that's...
Fund 19 is what?
That's the building improvement fund, so...
Okay, is that, is that the one where, where we went out and did the bond? The five-year bond?
Um, not a, I don't, not 100% sure. I know that every year, we put 100,000 into it.
Okay.
And that's what we use the building improvement plan off of. That's what I've always taken out of, but I can't remember that for...
Steve, we had take, we had taken out a bond that we did when we did all the windows and everything over in the family service center, and I'm just curious as to, this was, wouldn't have been listed as a project under that, I don't think.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it couldn't be amended, but I don't know what money is left in there.
Okay.
I think we should research that, too, to see. I, I know the, I know we put the hundred a year in.
Yep, yep.
But I, you know, I think we did a bond, took over a lot of things, and I don't know what ultimately the final status of that was, so...
Check into that.
Hopefully, there's some funds there you can...
Okay. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Dan with Hartland Trail.
Do you prefer the podium or the podium? Well, thank you for taking the time. We're just presenting a little bit here for this resolution of support that's in your packet, I believe. Resolution of support for funding of the Hartland Trail from the Minnesota State Legislature. And many of you around here would be quite familiar with the Hartland Trail. I know Commissioner Gross and Waylon are both involved with their, with their task force as far as planning the Hartland Trail, and so we've been meeting since, at least MetroCog, who I'm with, has been meeting since 2014 to work on planning the Hartland Trail through Clay County. And so, anyway, part of that is looking for funding for planning, pre-design, and then eventually construction of the Hartland Trail. And that's something that we, we just need to move forward with, with the trail. It has been designated by the Minnesota Legislature in 2016, sorry, 2006, as a, to extend the trail from Park Rapids to Morehead, so it is kind of official through the legislature. Just need the funding to do that. So anyway, what you see here is, we're reaching out to the different jurisdictions in Clay County, which the trail would be going through, and that includes Clay County, obviously, to look for a resolution of support, just supporting, saying that, you know, we support the trail, and to kinda help provide some, just help to, not, not financial help, but just to say that we support the trail and the, and the funding that we're being proposed. So anyway, there's a bonding bill coming up here, as you know. The legislature will be meeting in mid-February, and so we have been working with our Senator Eakin in the area, and then also Ben Lean and Mark Court. And so the author for this bill will likely be Senator Eakin on the Senate side, and then also Mark Court on the, on the House side. So anyway, just what we have here is a resolution supporting that. We have been working with the other groups that are working on the trail between here and Park Rapids, so you'll see that the ask for this bonding, funding would be 4.2 million dollars. Most of that would be going toward the construction of the trail over in the Frezey to Detroit Lakes area. Part of that would go toward the planning and pre-design of the trail in our area. So anyway, it's a collaborative bill that we're working with all the different agencies along the way.
Now, as Dan said, most of the money probably would go to Becker, the Becker County area, but we need something to start planning. If we're gonna do in Clay County, we need something to plan, so that's what...
Dan, do you think we'll have the trail done by the end of this year?
Well, you know, depends on the weather.
Yeah. I'll move the resolution.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on approving the resolution 2020-9?
Has there ever been, in today's dollars, a, a estimate of what it would take to put that trail through all of Clay County?
Um, it's been a, we haven't done too many full-blown estimates, just because I think we need to kinda know what the right of, you know, what kind of easements might be necessary, and river crossing, and rail river crossings, and things like that. So, you know, with things being a little bit tentative as far as the alignment, it's not set in stone at the moment. That's what we're kinda looking for planning. So we, we don't quite have a good estimate at this point, but you know, with trails, it's something like, you know, three or 400,000, $300,000 per mile, or something like that, so...
At this point, right now, from Holly to Linden or the bubble, is about the only thing that looks like we may have a definite route, but other than that, there's no routes that are really been looked at to work on yet, because it's very unsure where it's gonna go yet, so...
Yeah, we're making a little bit of progress. We've also been working at MinDOT with the reconstruction of the bridge that they might be doing.
It's long overdue. I mean, it was actually approved when I was in 1974, or something like that, so, I mean, even Haney was young at that time, so, a long time ago, so...
Glad you didn't pick on Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion on the board, on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for being with us, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing we got Troy, James is here, and Julie, gonna be talking about the food service agreement. How are you, Troy?
Can we take your application?
Oh, this is gonna be on the food contract with Trinity?
Yes.
Okay.
James, has something you need to, you'd like to explain first?
Yeah, so first, I wanna thank Julie for being patient with me. It kinda got held up, but I was researching the National School Lunch thing a little bit further, talked to Trinity, and talked to the state Department of Education, who controls those funds, and really make some changes to their menu that met, met the standard, and will be eligible for the National School Lunch program. The price of the meals stay very close to the same, significantly cheaper. The snack went up, because the snack wasn't even close, but the snack is reimbursable if it meets the standard, so either we get reimbursed, or we pay less for the snack, but have to pay the whole price, so... Basically, that's what it is. You gotta not show Clay County's difference, it'd be the same, but Clay County's share, the way I figure that it, my budget's gonna be better now. It's, I'm not in the red starting out the year, because of loss of the National School Lunch program.
Okay. Did that impact anything on your side?
It did not. Nor did it impact detox.
So the contract that we signed with Trinity, that's the whole?
That's, actually, what I'm here for. There was a copy for you to sign, if you didn't have one, I have one with me.
I thought I had one.
There's another question?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. My question is, on the bottom, it says kosher meals at $4 a meal. I don't, I don't recall that our kitchen was designed to be kosher, so my curiosity is, how do they have those sent in?
So how that works, and that, why there's an additional cost, is because they're specially prepackaged meals that you buy online and meet all requirements, and that's why there's an increased cost, and I was agreeable to amend, so it was Troy and...
Right, I was just curious, 'cause I didn't recall us doing that in the design. Okay, well, that makes sense. I do have a copy of the contract here.
This has been reviewed by Tony in the county attorney's office, so...
So is, does that contract then have the language regarding your suggested amendment to it?
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jim, to move forward the contract with Trinity. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's starting next week?
It starts this Friday for supper.
This Friday? Are you gonna be there to eat?
I will be there to see it, sir.
Are you kosher?
I'm not cooking, I know, but I...
Well, that's why we hired these guys, so...
Thank you. You wouldn't want me to cook.
You do have a nice kitchen there, but that's different.
Yes.
It is very nice, yes.
Nice to do it.
Yeah, thank you for the tour, by the way, that was nice.
Okay, I don't see anything to sign on here.
There is, I mean, please, it's a second from...
Oh, you've got it there, okay. Very good. Okay, thank you very much for that.
So that was, that's, 'cause that, that school lunch program, what they did last year?
It's gonna bring up 100,000, 15,000 in 19.
Yeah, a lot of money.
It's amazing how many meals we could write there every day, you know. Keep the rich alive, I don't see need to...
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion with other, unless you wanna tell us something about it? Okay, we're all set, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, now I know why you're still so...
I asked why, so, okay.
You and I were staring at each other.
Yeah, we're business talk.
There you go. Why aren't you leaving?
Can't get to me that easy.
Sorry about that, Joe.
That's okay.
Okay, we got a full-time correction officer that we need, you requesting to fill?
Yes, I do. I have a full-time officer who is working for Arto County Sheriff's Office, so it's a loss for us, but we wish her well, and I do need to fill her vacancy at the jail. It could be a male or female position.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion?
Will we see any cost savings, besides the health of the piece?
Very little. She was only employed for us about two years, not quite two years, so it'd be minimal.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Kirk, you're in the used car business.
Some people think of the used car sales as trashier.
You pick up trash.
Yes, you got trash. It's all about pickups, that's for sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, coming before you today. The Sheriff's Department is in the process of liquidating a 2015 F-250 four-by-four COO cab, and essentially, it's to replace one of our pickups. It's a 2000 pickup out there at the landfill. It represents a pretty good opportunity. The cost is $25,000. The vehicle itself has 10,000 miles on it, so it's almost a brand-new vehicle, and will fit our needs very, very well. We have a capital replacement fund, something that Kevin started, or was adamant about getting, so we have money in the budget to pay for this. So I'm asking for your approval to purchase the vehicle from the Sheriff's Department.
Here, I'm trying to get rid of a lemon, or a sheriff. No, we're not. Good question. He saw me coming a long ways.
You know, for all practical purposes, it's probably gonna fit their needs better than it did fit our needs. It was ordered as a four-door, and it's a long box, it's an eight-foot box. You need a football field to turn that thing around, and we use it up in our old log at times. We use it in other areas of the colony. It's just, it's not practical for us right now. It's the four-door, I don't think we've had anybody sit in the backseat of it, so we didn't really need a four-door type vehicle for them. It was, it was just, it was a good opportunity for them to get a good vehicle, for us to kinda upgrade. We ended up putting a claw on the new F-250 that we purchased, so we're able to use that for, for rescues in the wintertime, so this was just a good opportunity for the two departments to work well together.
So you replacing the vehicle, then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so replacing a 2000 Chevy vehicle. The Chevy vehicle's got about 160,000 miles on it.
I'm moved to approve the request.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second to approve the request to buy, replace the vehicle. Any further discussion?
I just have a question in terms of what our policy is on when different departments, Steve, get rid of vehicles. Do we reach out to the other department heads? I, I know, like Soil and Water is looking at possibly purchasing a used, and it just would seem if we could keep all of that within, this is great that this...
Yeah, we've done that a number of times over the last year, and so we've tried to do that.
Coordinate, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I mean, that's how we found out about it, at one of the management meetings. Mark mentioned that they have a vehicle they were going to liquidate, and I thought, this is a pretty good opportunity, so they were very good about that.
So where do we go with your vehicle, then?
We're gonna take it to the auction, Mr. Chairman, and auction it out probably this spring.
All right, we got a motion on the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Okay, do we wanna do committee reports first, or do we wanna go to closed session now?
Okay.
We can probably do committee reports before we go to, today, we'll start with Jenny.
Thank you. Okay, last week, I phoned in to the land management committee. Good dialogue on, on upcoming issues and acquisitions, and reports from the different agencies. Commissioner Campbell was also there, if he has anything else to add, but pretty good dialogue continuing forward there. I, as part of the AMC Extension Committee, continuing the process to review the different leadership award applications. We did make our final recommendations yesterday, and we'll have another conference call to discuss that further. That will happen at the legislative session. And yesterday, I attended our Clay County Substance Abuse Committee meeting. Good dialogue on the T-21 ban, and what that, that means in terms of implementation for different county businesses. As you recall, it's currently illegal for anyone under 21 to purchase tobacco products. That's nationwide law, but they may still be in possession of tobacco between 18 and 21. And that's proved to be, law enforcement has some significant concerns in terms of what that means to the school-aged community, and there are some different regulations that have changed with the pods for the vapor, the vapes. So there is discussion that Morehead may want to consider an ordinance change to not allow possession of tobacco, just to kind of get more in line with the nationwide law, and that, that, we may be seeing that request come to us, too. I know that at some point, it will be a federal law, but there's just kind of a lot of ambiguity about what people are doing there, but that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
All right. Last Tuesday afternoon, I did take the jail tour that I missed on Monday afternoon, so it was nice to be able to see that, the second half phase of that almost complete. It's well done. Then on the 29th, the public outreach meeting we had for the diversion authority, we went over, I, there's a, there's gonna be a survey that's gonna be sent out to, they originally had planned for people in Fargo and Cass County, and I said, and I brought up, and they had no mention of Morehead or Clay County, so I said, why not? And I encouraged them to do so, that, and they were looking for how they could maybe get some sort of a list of an area that would, you know, and it pretty much has to do with the impacted area or the benefited area. And so I suggested they go to the Morehead School District, 'cause Morehead School District, you know, during the last bond referendum, they, they sent out some letters of information, and it does cover kind of some of the same area. Obviously, there's some area to the north that maybe wouldn't be impacted, but they will be dead out. We had some more discussion about the bio geo-monitoring easements, and how that's going. I think we're getting up to the last days now before action might be taken based on what our board recommended. We got a report on the Red River Basin Commission Conference, and then we reviewed the FMdiversion.gov analytics for the social media. And then we had a, that's right after that, we had a land management meeting, which Commissioner Mojo talked about, and some of the, some of the same topics go from the outreach to the land management, but we focus a lot on the impacts, and the mitigation updates, and where we are with acquisitions, and we get reports at each land meeting of all the new properties that have been acquired, and ones that are in negotiations, you know, and that's available to everybody online, too, so that they can see that. But each month, we see more and more things lining up, especially in the channel itself. And in Clay County, I just did wanna bring this up, in Clay County, we have actually had, we've had 10 rights of entry granted out of the 67 so far, and it's, that's just kind of early going. And then we have had five parcels that have already been taken care of in terms of flow easements, that have been agreed to on five of those properties in Clay County, so it's starting to, starting to move along, and those, that's, there's 138 parcels, 138 parcels without structures in, on the Minnesota side, that will need to have flow easements, and we just started that process. As a matter of fact, the flow easement process on the North Dakota side is just starting, so to have five already on the Minnesota side is pretty good. And then we have, we have 32 parcels in Minnesota where there's actually structures on site. And of those 32, we have one flow easement done, and one in negotiation, and so the others means, the others means we just haven't done anything. Flow easements don't have to be in place until the project is actually operational, you know, but our goal is to have all of those well beforehand, so... And then Thursday, we had the actual diversion authority meeting, and there we get recaps of the public outreach meeting, land management meeting, the finance meeting. The finance meeting gets pretty complicated. And then probably the most interesting thing at the diversion meeting was at the very end, when our administrator had brought forward to us an envision, resilience, sustainability program overview, and he's looking at bringing in this company to, the goal would be to look through it all and have another, look at it, and potentially ways to save, the whole idea is it's supposed to save a lot of money. We'll see. It was new to most of us. He had asked for a preliminary short-term deal for $40,000, which is still a lot of money. Um... money. So I think right now, we, we're going to go that route now, but before we, we need a lot more questions answered before we go any further than that, so. Then, oh, and then just before that, on Thursday, Commissioner Gross and I were at the highway department in a meeting with Gabe regarding planning for spring flooding, and how our sheriff's department and highway department will work together, so it was a very good meeting. And it's nice to see that we've got those people thinking out ahead, getting ready for what's going on, so. That concludes my report.
Jim?
Thank you. On Tuesday, I attended the GL tour along with Commissioner Campbell. It was nice to see that wrapping up. And then on Thursday, I attended the reception for Clay County Judicial Referee Sue Soheim. And that was nice as well. That's my report.
Okay. Wednesday, I went to drug court again. It's nice to see another one graduate from drug court, and she went through it in 21 months, so she was very active in the program. I got, I think she felt the benefit of it, and, and we also saw during drug court that day that what happens when you don't follow the rules. So one person went, was back in, was taken out of the program and pulled back into jail, so, I mean, the program isn't always success, you know, but they have some very strict rules, and it really works out good for the people, and it was good to see another one graduate. Thursday, we had that spring flood that Commissioner Campbell talked about, you know, that we talked about, the different groups getting together, and it was really interesting to see all the people that, you know, do get involved in the spring flood, you know, that Mark Sloan was out there with, with, with Mandy and stuff, and just how their maps, they're going to make up maps, how, how the roads, so if there's a road closure, how many people have to be notified about that and stuff like that, so. There's a very good group out there, and it was good to be part of that, and I thank Gabe for getting that organized and getting that going, and those are the two things I had, thank. Well, I forgot about you, didn't I?
Yeah, I was going to say, you caught me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Frank.
Sorry.
You know, you weren't here last week, so.
Yeah, I just, Kevin already went over some of the meetings I had the, with the diversion board and the public outreach, and I know if you mentioned there is a brown bag session for the board on that envision, planning thing on Friday at noon, I think.
Yes.
That was it for me.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday after board, I met with Kimberly Savage on a series of different issues in the Recorder's Office. She has been in the process of evaluating the fees, and I think this after, after board this morning, we also discussed the Recorder's Compliance Fund, which we'll talk about after board. Also, from an awareness standpoint, the Recorder's Office is going to be, going through a software conversion on March 2nd, and during that, that day, they're, they are going to be unable to record documents. She's provided in, notification through her, through her newsletter, and also it's on the front page of our website, but just so our citizens are aware. That afternoon, along with James O'Donnell, I met with Mike Burns and Kerry Puser from Michael J. Burns Architect Firm. They're the firm that's been handling the juvenile center project, but we've been outside of, outside of our original 24-month contract since last August, and we've been meeting to determine what the best ways to move forward. I don't have anything necessarily for signature today, but just for insight from, from this border direction, in our, in our discussions, what we would be requesting to come forward here in the next few weeks, as far as getting through the remainder of the contract. In the original, in the original contract, the compensation was established by 8% fee of the guaranteed maximum price. And as this board is aware, there's been some challenges with that project, and so what we would be, what we'd be suggesting moving forward with this contract would be adding up all the change orders from April of 2018 through the remainder of the project, and applying an 8% fee to that, which would be their compensation. Right now, through, through change order 29, that fee would be $29,783. And so, we know from our owners' meetings that we're probably going to have at least one more change order. Again, we don't, from a significant standpoint, it certainly wouldn't be a huge impact to that final number, but that is where we're, we're at today. I've had Brian, Brian Milton and asked Tony to put some, together a suggested amendment and verbiage on that, but from the board's perspective, wondering if that's an adequate way to move forward on this.
Well, I, I'll comment. I certainly, I certainly think that the, the 8% approach is the only way that, that we should go. There's a, there's a lot of things, and I, we've had different commissioners question at different times why some of these things weren't part of the original plan to begin with, and simply because the contract, I think it, the active contract period ended, didn't it, Steve?
It ended, yeah.
Yeah, so the contract period ended, and, and, you know, for, to go forward, it's, you know, they, you know, they should have been, we, they had a contract for a dollar amount, and anything beyond that, the contract was over.
Sure.
And, and, you know, I think we're, I think we're being very fair in suggesting that, that we're willing to, for any cost to them beyond the contract period of time, to follow the same criteria as the original contract is the only way that we should be able to go. There was, we never, in any circumstance, agreed to any such thing as time, you know, on a time and materials basis. That was never our intent and never our plan, so I, speaking for myself, I wouldn't support anything but that.
I guess I would agree with that also, you know, that continue the contract the way it was. I mean, I don't know whose fault it was that we went over runs, but I agree with that.
Well, most of it is really nobody's fault.
Well, it's not, right, but.
It's just a remodel thing you don't see till you tear things apart, but there are some things that were obvious that should have been caught.
Yeah. Okay, Jenny?
Well, and I've been quite critical of those change orders, and, and, you know, I don't know if, you know, we've had a longstanding, construction engineers did a lot for us, and obviously Burns and Mack is architect, and so somewhere along the line, something got missed. But the point is, I'm fine, I will only support the 8%, I feel like it's, it's to stay in line and pay for the changes that we have to, I mean, whether it was a good or bad mistake, we're paying for it, and that is what it is, but the 8% is more than fair. Anything above that, to me, would, would just be like, it didn't get planned for, and now we're going to get a bonus here at the end of the project, and so, in, in order to get a vote of support from you, that's the only thing we'll get.
Okay.
All right, I'll look forward to bring that, bring that to board in, within the next few weeks. On the 29th, Darren and I met with Jeremy Kovach, Dan Weir from Lakes Country Cooperative Service, and Andrea Albright, a client executive from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They provided us informational update on our insurance program overview and provided, again, some history. I think one of the important things that we took from that is a lot of times we think as the largest, the largest, I guess, partner in that group that maybe sometimes we're subsidizing other counties, and just one of the pieces of feedback that we received during that meeting is from, in the last five years, the trend, the trend for Blue Cross Blue Shield has been an 8.1% increase. What was agreed upon for Clay County was a 7.2% increase, and what we utilized as part of the trust was 8.3, and so it's certainly a situation in which we're not, we're not carrying, carrying the weight for, for other counties as part of that trust. So that was an interesting meeting. Dave Overbaugh and I met on the, later that afternoon with John Shockley and a number of representatives, Rhonda Twichell, Twichell on behalf of the Minnesota City County JPA. We had inter, inter productive discussions on the potential road, road impacts of the southern embankment, and again, much like the, some of the easements that we talked about for flow easement, so it's not an issue that will need to be addressed now, but it's going to be something that will have a highway.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I, why, we've met with John and Dave on that before.
Okay.
In the townships.
Okay.
I, I just am curious about the content of the.
Well, I think there's, there's impacts, yeah, there's impacts both on the city, on city roads, and then, and on township roads, and so I think finding the direction of which way to, what's the best way to move on that. I think that some of the roads, portions of each of the roads are going to have to be vacated in order for the embankment to go through, and so how, what's the best way to.
I just don't know why there were multiple representatives from Onstad when it seems to be more like it should be a township-county more discussion, and, I mean, you're on highways certainly.
Well, you know, I, I think more importantly, I, you know, I think this is, the issues that you're discussing there, quite frankly, I think I should have been there, and I also think Commissioner Mojo should have been there.
Sure.
And I, and I say that, I say that because we're also involved with the lands committee thing, that through the diversion, that can have an awful lot, you know, of, of say, and we certainly need to know, and we need to know what, what the consequences are, what we may have to do, you know, within the southern area, and I don't want to be surprised by it later on. I would rather be part of the planning of it.
Sure.
And so, the minute you start bringing this up, that raises my eyebrows on it, because they, those are things that, when you have those, they're good, they're good to discuss with their highway engineer and whoever, but in this particular case, I think, you know, if you have any more of those, Commissioner Mojo and I should be part of that.
Sure. My apologies, I was not aware that, that you'd met on that, on this issue, and so we'll, we'll make sure that you guys are included.
Right, and just to further on that, we had Holy Cross Township part of those discussions before, that was with the plan, the Plan A, and so Commissioner Campbell's 100% right. If I have people in that area that watch this today, and they're going to ask me questions, I have no idea what we talked about.
Sure.
So that's.
Yep. Sure. All right, on the 20th, on the 30th, I met with Rhonda Porter and her staff on a series of issues with social services. That afternoon, along with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross, we had update again from Gabe Tweeton, Emergency Manager, on the forecast for flooding and preparations. I attended the diversion meeting on the 30th, which Commissioner Campbell and Waylon have addressed. On the, on the 3rd, I met with Georgia on a series of issues related to the family service center, and been having ongoing conversations with Kathy McKay. They continue to struggle both with recruiting and retaining LPNs and RNs, and certainly our hope was that through the market study and their adjustment, that, that we would have more success in recruiting and retaining, but that continues to be a challenge, so we'll work with Kathy and looking at potential solutions there. Lastly, I, I've recently had a couple of discussions with Chris Volkers from the city of Moorhead. They've, have become aware, or we're aware of our master planning process on the, on the county level, and the city has inquired about our willingness to meet with their board and committee. They also have a need within the city for their, city hall space needs, and so I've spoken with each of you individually, but we haven't had any discussions at the board level on this, and so in talking with the chair, Mr. Chair thought it would be good for us to have a, have a discussion on, on this topic.
Well, I, I think we should, you know, certainly meet with the city about it, but I think we should probably wait till we hear more about the process that we've got going right now, and see what position that puts us in, and then, you know, then have some discussions with the city and, you know, see where that will lead, but.
Well, I think having a discussion with the city will tell us how, what kind of process we want to move on with, because we've already looked at, do we build a big building, do we build just the detailed center, do we do this? I mean, we haven't involved more than all this, you know, and I feel Moorhead's a big part of the county, and I just felt getting together before we do all this planning, and all of a sudden, oh, by the way, here's another plan, you know, so I don't want to go too far on one plan, but which way do we want to go on it, you know, and it's just, I just felt that a meeting with the two boards would be helpful. Jenny?
Well, a couple of years ago, when Clay County, Clay County was planning for their jail, and Moorhead was planning for their schools, and, and the city was doing their underpass, we had a community facilities task force, and it was important for us to meet at that level, to discuss upcoming projects, talk about what the tax burden that it could, could have, and along the way, we've quit meeting on that, and so I, I think this is one, I would be completely open to meeting with the city. Moorhead, I'm curious about, you know, I just, I'm not sure if it, if it fits, but I'm totally open to having that conversation. I almost feel like this would be an opportunity to respur that, that meeting group, because I, we're not going to quit coordinating with the city in the future, and it just seems like that would be a good opportunity to work that out. You know, certainly there's a large number of new members on the city of Moorhead, so even having a committee of the whole, I would be open to having those discussions. It's kind of up to whatever the chair's, chair's desire is, but personally, I, you know, I, that's why I argued about keeping the community facilities task force before. We're a long ways down in this planning process, and I don't know how far Moorhead is, and so I'm not sure.
Well, I agree. We don't know how far Moorhead is either, and we know where we're at right now, you know, but all of a sudden, we may have to go in a different direction, you know, if that works out, you know, but I think we have to start with our Moorhead's plans and stuff, and Moorhead makes up a lot of Clay County, and I think, I mean, we have three, four commissioners that represent Moorhead, so I think we need to get together with them.
When are, when are we supposed to hear from the plan that we've got, we're working on right now?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Waylon, we are scheduled to meet again, what we hope is one final time on February 24th, and then out of that meeting would, would come a presentation to this board.
Kevin, the community, the task force that we had, that Commissioner Mojo talks about, through, and again, this was something that, it was suggested through our Clay County Joint Powers Board that they take over that. I recall those conversations, and I recall being against that, and I think you and I were.
Clay County was against that.
Yeah, yeah, well, but then ultimately.
Right.
Yeah. We, but I think what we decided was two of the meetings that we have with the Clay County Joint Powers would be to discuss these other issues, and I don't know that that next one is scheduled till like May, which is down the road, but some of this started, Mayor Judd had pulled me aside before one of our recent meetings that we're at together, and he asked about this possibility of meeting and maybe collaborating on some sort of a joint venture, and, and I did mention the concerns that, you know, we're well on our way with plans, and, you know, so the, by, by doing this, I said, you know, we have, we have needs that are going to, that we have to deal with as a county, and, you know, by meeting with them, what would that do in terms of delays for what we need to do? But I did say that it, we should, we should meet, and, you know, and I know, you know, they, I think you may have seen, or I think he said, did he send it to everybody, or regarding the, you know, we've done this before, and he referenced the law enforcement center, you know, as an example. Well, we're not in a position where, I don't think we're going to be in a position where we could have a owner-tenant type of deal on something to this magnitude, not, not right now where we are outside of, I don't think we could afford to, as a county, to do the whole thing on our own and then just rent. But with that, I, I think we should do that, and I'd certainly, I'd certainly, you know, and I think Grant and I worked with them to establish a joint venture there. I don't know how you want to do this, but I think we should have a, even a pre-meeting, maybe, before this presentation. Commissioner Waylon, I think they're interested in knowing, and, and I think it might give us an idea of just what in the world are they looking for, what are their needs, you know, and, and, you know, I'm assuming our group is going to have what we, what we think we need in square footage, what would they need in square footage? If it's on campus, I'm concerned, then what about additional parking? So it gets complicated, but I think we do need to have that discussion, and I think we need to have the discussion on behalf of all of our constituents. I think that's, that's the most important piece of it, so. I would certainly be willing to, to sit down and, and discuss that with them. I don't know what, how you want to go.
Well, I guess we could probably just line up a meeting with them, you know, see we can get them to.
Why can't we have it with all of them? Because my concern.
That's what I mean, right.
I just, I really think that we should have both boards. I just, I really think that we should have both boards, full boards, talk about it, because, you know, we give committee reports the best of our recollection, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This is such a...
I agree with that. That's what I meant. I mean, we should have both groups together, and Steve can arrange that, I don't know, with Chris or with someone, and let's get a committee... Not a committee, let's get both councils together and see what the feeling is.
Yeah, that'd be a good meeting. That's right.
And then, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, when would you like to do that? Do you want to do that prior to our findings from our strategic plan, or do you want to do that as soon as possible?
Well, I think we should really... My feeling is to do it as soon as possible, because if everybody feels they want to go together, this is going to completely change our plans on the building committee. It's my thought.
I don't know what... Jim, you got any?
Well, we don't even know if we're going to do a project yet.
That's right, you know, so which way do you want to go?
So which way is the cart going, you know? Yes, I think we should get input from them and hear about what they are thinking about before we have our next meeting about it.
I mean, when we started this committee, started planning, we had no idea that Morehead wanted to be part of it, you know? So it was not in the plans at all, and, I mean, whatever plan McCarthy's working on now doesn't include any of that, so...
I think we need to find out.
And if we're going to meet, you know, do they have any pre-plans started yet? Do they have any idea how they pay for what they want to do and, you know, those issues? So...
Yeah. No, Mr. Chair?
You know, if we're going to have a meeting, we need to, you know, we can have a meeting, and I'll say, gee, that sounds like a great idea, but, you know...
You have to have some meat and potatoes.
Yeah.
You know, and I think if we're going to have that meeting, I think we should, you know, I think maybe what we ought to do is look at seeing if we can book our good old big room at the LAC for that purpose.
Good idea.
Did you get timeline? Yeah, I'm just looking at our upcoming meetings, and I know that last week of February, we're at the legislative conference. The week before that is President's State Holiday. I mean, so I'm not sure if you're looking the end of that week. Obviously, there's a lot of schedules that need to happen, but we can say what works for us, or...
Yeah, Friday.
You know, and that maybe is a good idea, and maybe what we ought to do is, in that process, forward a few of those questions that, you know, that have been brought up here this morning that we have. What are they looking at for their needs, and so that they can maybe come to that meeting with answers to those things, and whether that's right after, you know, the first part of March, that would be fine with me. I think the main thing is that they want to, you know, they want to start it, get a dialogue started, you know? And as long as we tell them, I'm thinking March February is running out in terms of scheduling for the ability to do that.
Historically, their council meets late afternoon and early evening. What would this board prefer as far as a meeting time?
I prefer it on a date sometime.
Friday, eleven o'clock.
All right.
I think we're open to being flexible, to meet with them. It's just, it honestly is more the date, and Commissioner Campbell's right. I mean, we all have a lot of meetings already scheduled for February, and so...
Yeah, I assume they've got some idea of what they're looking... You know, they're looking at future needs too, so, you know, in terms of how many employees would they need to accommodate, and how many parking places, that's always a huge issue, you know? And because, you know, we're talking a pretty significant project if we were to do something together in terms of property and buildings, and so...
All right. In addition to the questions, I think another question would be, in terms of them, what would they be looking at for... Is there a particular site that's necessary for them? Because as far as we're concerned, you know, our admin needs to be on campus, you know? And so when we start doing that, and we start adding another potentially two-hundred-and-fifty staff personnel, where in the world are we going to put all those cars? You know, and how many more blocks are we buying off? It's a lot of things coming into play there, so...
Where are we going to get the money?
Yeah, and we're... Yeah, that's right. It's a pretty important question.
So we're giving you good direction there, right?
Yeah, I'll reach out to the city, and we'll get something set up for it, it sounds like into early March.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, with that, a motion to go into a closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into a closed session.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, going to a closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are presently in a closed session. Okay, we're back in session. Any further discussion, anybody? Got anything to add? We got your meetings, Commissioner Moser, See Morehead Downtown Master Plan, that's on Thursday, four o'clock. See what some of the plans are. Where's that at? And then right down, right in the...
Right in the Morehead Center Mall.
Okay.
The only thing is, I know usually about this time, we start scheduling that Rural Cities and Clay County meeting for the end of February, so you might want to have Colleen reach out and schedule that.
Okay. And then the townships, I think, are meeting March seventeenth or something like that. Okay. Nothing further? We're adjourned.